Good afternoon, everybody. It is September 20th, Monday, 4:00 PM. I'm calling this meeting to order. Welcome to our board, my board colleagues, Dr. Stebbelfield and all of our staff. Thank you for joining us today. And Ryan, thank you for stepping in for Mr. Gohin as well today. So, thank you for joining us, everybody. Before we do our roll call, I will read our board norms and protocols. The board, we agree to respect the differences of opinions in making decisions for the district, to follow best practices in managing the superintendent and the management of the board itself, to stay on task when conducting, conducting business for the district, including while at board meetings, to never surprise the superintendent or each other when conducting official business of the district, to read these norms at the beginning of each board meeting and at board workshops as a reminder of how to conduct our meetings and to continually self-check to determine if we are following our norms when conducting district business. So again, thank you. Good afternoon for everybody that's watching at home as well. Thank you for joining us. Ms. Smith, would you please do a roll call?
Elonda Clark.
Elonda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, present.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, present.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, present.
Dr. Nguyen. Dr. Jaeger.
Dr. Jaeger, present.
Thank you. And I believe Dr. Nguyen may join us here shortly. So, um, all right. I would entertain a motion to approve today's special agenda.
I'll move second.
Moved in second, Ms. Smith.
Elonda Clark.
Elonda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Nguyen. Dr. Jaeger.
Dr. Jaeger, yes.
Thank you. And then approved. All right. So we'll jump right into the first agenda item. Would entertain a motion to approve today's HR report.
So move second.
Moved in second. Any questions or discussion on the HR report? Hearing none. Ms. Smith.
Elonda Clark.
Thank you for calling. Elonda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Dr. Jaeger.
Dr. Jaeger, yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next on our agenda is we have an update have from about our athletics eligibility. Eligibility. Dr. Stebbelfield, anything you want to add before we pass it on to Tammy?
Um, I just want to share that this, the request is a continuation which Tammy will share more detail about from what we had in place due to the COVID and pandemic when the schools were shut down. What we're finding as our students are transitioning back full time, that there is still an adjustment that they're having to make with a full load and being back with majority of the students and several of our staff's members are also making adjustments. So, we're just trying to put some things in place for this particular year in order to not to put our students at a disadvantage, given that some of them have quarantined, been out in quarantine and we don't have clear, just been transparent. It's still, it's new for our teachers like what to do when students are in quarantine and even though we have canvas and what not to do. And in some cases, we have students who may have an F, not to them not putting forth effort. It's just playing catch up and/or getting assignments in and understanding what the teachers' expectations are, given that we just have different variables this year. This is not asking to change the policy permanent. It is being asked for this year while we put some supports in place for the students more systematically that can carry over into the future.
Hey, looking to share my screen, if I may. I was going to put the presentation up there. I know everybody's. I'm looking for a way to share it. Ah, there we go. Is everybody able to see that? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. So the request, as Dr. Stebbles said, it's just to amend the policy right now. This would be effective for not just athletics, but all of our activities as well. Continue with the portion of eligibility policy that requires student support plans. Then any student with an F or GPA below 2.0 for the remainder of the year would be in an SSP that's overseen by your building principals and whatever systems they have in place at each school. These plans must occur prior to practice in order to fully participate in athletics. In addition, we did start doing this last year. It's not part of your policy, but we did start doing weekly grade checks for all of our participants. So we know where they're at. Coaches have the ability to find out if it's a low grade because it's missing assignments. Is it test scores? You know, exactly what is happening. That way that SSP actually works towards what that student needs. Students with an F or GPA lower than two would be required to attend the SSP prior to the practice. The time after school allows the students to get help from teachers that are in the building. It also allows for students to have the time to complete, turn in assignments. We know that missing assignments are a big part of the grade and some, and a lot of them when they leave practice at 6:30, you know, 6 o'clock, it's a dinner hour and some of them work and they're not taking that time to complete. So we're providing that opportunity while they're in school. We're asking you to suspend the requirement of eligibility policy that prevents them from practicing and competing. The administrators will reevaluate those SSPs. The principals, I spoke to them last week and they were in support of this amendment. The amended policy allows students with academic needs to better manage class assignments, receive the teacher's help with tutors, any test prep they might need. And especially with the quarantines, we don't, we don't know when the quarantine occurs. And by our policy, starting two weeks from progress reports, then they would be in a position where they would lose their eligibility to practice and compete. And they may be put into a quarantine which, for 14 days, which doesn't give them time to get the on-hand help they need when they return to school. The activities that involves for the first semester, as you can see, the, the sports are listed there as well as the activities. I can tell you that we did revise this policy to do just the SSPs at the end of last semester prior to the start of January. And we had, I did give a, a board update. It was back in January, but it did, I can remind you that there were 29 students with a total of 77 Fs at that time before we amended the policy. At the end, on February 5th, when we looked at those grades, five of those 29 students, all but five had been at 80% and the total number Fs were reduced from 77 to 16. So we, we found that doing the SSP and requiring right before practice provided the urgency for those students. It gave them the help that they needed and helped them mostly manage time to get caught up. And so that's the, the input I'd have is that we do have some data from last year. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Romstadt, for that information. Would open up to any questions from our board.
I have a couple of questions for Ms. Romstadt. On this, it says that time after school will allow the students to get help from teachers in the building. How can they do that and also attend athletic practices at the same time?
Well, they would be coming to practice late. What we found is whatever they write in SSP has to be done first. Most of the teachers aren't in the building beyond that 30, 40 minutes after school. And so that was that time. If the SSP tells them they need to be in a study table or in a more controlled environment for making up assignments, then it may be an hour and then they would join practice after that was completed. It depends on what that SSP requires of them.
So our staff are on duty for approximately a half hour after school's dismissed, correct? So we're, are we expecting our students to catch up in that half hour time? Or are we providing extra tutoring for our students that's going to last longer than just a half hour?
Exactly. Because some students need more help. The teacher is just as an opportunity for them to maybe reconnect on as to what's happening, whether it's test prep. If they need tutoring, that would be a different piece of the SSP, which, you know, obviously a teacher would only have 30 minutes. They're not going to do a lot of tutoring that time, but they might be able to clarify assignments, test prep, what needs to be done. But if they need tutoring, then that would be the time we would also try to connect with that based on resources in the school.
Yeah. And Ms. Humphries, I would say that that is a larger port part of, for all of our students, not just our students in athletics and activities. There are several schools that have that time built into the school day in the schedule and that's a larger conversation that we'll start to have when we look at changing the schedule. We won't be able to do it this year because we are, I mean, I shouldn't say that. There is a possibility we may be able to make some adjustments second semester, but that is something more long-term that I believe that we need to look at as building some academic support time and academic enrichment time into the regular school day when all of our staff are contracted so that our students can have the support that they need. And there are several districts that already have that, that have schedules that are on block schedules like us that will allow us to do this. But this policy won't address what you just said, but it will give them some, like the 30 minutes each day prior to practice.
And just. I guess my concern is that they're already failing or having D in the class, correct? Because they're below C. They have got a lot of work they need to do academically. But then we're, they also have the practice to come in to play. And Tammy said something about some of the kids don't get home till 6:30. That, I don't, I don't know if, if we're putting enough emphasis on the fact that you need to have decent academics to participate in the extracurricular stuff because you're filling up their time a lot. And I know how important sports are. I've been to the games the last week. I've seen the kids, how excited they are and the families and stuff. But I don't want us to lose the focus on academics and the fact that we have, this is an unprecedented time and things are falling through the cracks. We've got, you know, kids out on, on, on quarantine. But I, I have a hard time envisioning it being best for a student who's, who is failing and struggling to have more tutoring time and practice at the same time.
So, can I ask the clarifying question to Tammy? Cause this is new to me. What, prior to this being amended, do you know what was put in place for students? Because beyond the 30 minutes after school, when the teachers are available, were students left to their own resources and that kind of thing to figure out how to get tutoring? Or is that something that was strategically provided at each of the schools? Because.
Go ahead.
Yeah. So that's, I'm, I'm just asking, is that, is there something additional that schools did for, or are doing for students who have Fs, not limited to our athletes, athletes, but because this is particular about athletes and students in activities. What are the things do you know that are currently in place to provide that additional support to students if this policy is not amended?
Sure. I know that last year they had designated space where students who had an F or GPA below 2.0 had to, to go to, I would say probably 70% of the lower grades had, had more to do with not having work turned in. And so they were requiring them to be there an hour to complete work and assignments before they could attend practices. So they were basically coming into practices late. It is up to every school to set up. I do have a school now that's actually spending an hour after school before any practices start working on basically this thing, making sure they have time for complete assignments, see any teachers they need to see before they even start practice, which we push back the late buses to leave a little bit later. But each program has to, with each student, they have to have a designated space, whatever they need, whether it be in a lab, a computer lab, they might all meet there. A coach would be assigned to do that, or an athletic director, or whoever was available that was part of that SSP that they would meet with the kids. I would say majority of the time was spent completing assignments.
But Ms. Drew, then Ms. Clark, and then Dr. Nguyen is kind of the order I saw, folks.
Well, what I was just going to say is, as a former teacher, students do come in and ask for help. Sometimes a teacher may stay past the 30-minute time period for the purpose of helping. And I think that what we have to do is to recognize that within the schools, they do have a way in which they can help educate not only the athletics department activities, but also the student body as a whole. What we have to do is to try to get started with the plan in the place. If it doesn't work, then we can come back and regroup and look at it and try to do something that will make it better. But I think this is a good plan for us to start with.
Thank you, Ms. Drew. Ms. Clark?
Yeah, what I was going to say, and Ms. Romstadt touched on it a little bit. I can't say that I'm 100% against this proposal. I actually, I, I think there's some benefit to it. I'm definitely not in, in favor of going back to the way it used to be, especially at this point. What we found, what I have found is providing students extra time doesn't mean they're going home to hit the books. And so how can we incentivize, incentivize our students and keep them engaged in their education? Because some of that, some of that former structure is, will not, will not work. And then we kind of pushed them, in my opinion, to, in a different direction. So, one thing I was curious about though, when you spoke about the SSP, it sounded like every school had their own process. And so, uh, one thing we've heard a lot is like, how can we, how can we streamline our processes? And so you're not going to one school and this is the process. You go to this school and this is the process. So, and maybe I just misunderstood. So can you, can you make sure I'm on the same page with you with the different schools and the SSPs?
Sure. The existing plan talks about designing a plan that's particular to the student that helps them with their needs based upon their Fs or their GPA. Every school has different resources or may have different people that are available or rooms that are available, or each SSP is not exactly the same. You're going to have a lot of kids where it's just having that time and somebody looking at their canvas or looking at what to do and making sure they're staying on top and getting stuff turned in or getting the incomplete things turned in. Basically what we found is it's created urgency with the student when they knew they were being held out out of practice and they had to get the work done and giving them that time in the day to do it. We saw that was the thing that really helped them move the needle to decreasing the number Fs and raising their GPAs is they didn't have a choice to go into practice till they completed, you know, this time. So, you're right. Every school's different only because of the resource, but I'd say they're all very similar in what they're doing as far as there's somebody overseeing a student working on their assignments and then coming into practice at a designated time once they've completed it.
Okay. And then my final question is around the staff. So, just thinking about last year, you know, there was a process that was put in place, but there seemed to be a lot of confusion. And so how would we make sure that there is no confusion and our staff is aligned with what the process is? Our coaches, I heard you say I talked to the principals, but what does that look like for the staff? Did you get any pushback or negative or maybe opportunities that we should be addressing? If this is the proposal that we go with?
Sure. I've visited with, with athletic directors in regard to this over a period of time. The head coaches this year were asked to provide a written plan, academic plan for their student athletes. That being that when a student athlete is not having success in performing academically, what are they going to do to be a part of solving that? So, my guess would be the student support plan will be a combination of that academic plan that that coach has set up and also whatever resources, counselor, whatever, whoever they have involved in helping that student move towards progress. And I don't know who all those people are. It's always overseen by the building principal. That's why I wanted to make sure that we visited with them and got their, you know, their approval. Because obviously, at the end of the day, they're going to be overseeing, making sure that there are SSPs in plan, you know, in place and that they're being followed.
Okay. Yeah, I think we've seen the downside of not having the right people on board with our proposals for sports. And so.
Sure.
All right. Thank you.
Dr. Nguyen, did you, it looked like you had a question.
Um, I think you called on Ms. Page first.
So, Ms. Page, did you have a question or comment?
No, I don't have a question. I have a comment. I'm concerned. I think it's good to have the SSP. They need the support. We need to try to help. But I have an issue with suspending the requirement. To me, if you don't have your grades together, you shouldn't be participating. We need to do everything we can to help them academically, get their grades and everything in gear. I would not let them compete. Cause if we say we're about the business of educating, they got to get, and a lot of it, I know, I retired in 2012, a lot of it has to do with just not turning the work in. And it's sad that you have to stay over somebody, but if that's what it takes, if we got the plan, then these coaches need to be on their job to make sure that they get that work in if they want them out. And the kid has a responsibility. So I'm not in favor of the practice and the plan until you get your grades together. Now, everybody has these big aspirations to go to college and I don't see colleges letting them play if they're not academically where they need to be. And sometimes, I don't know if we're helping them or hurting them by allowing this to take place. I just think you get your grades together. And if you really want to go to college, you really want to play, then you'll do what you need to do. And I like the plan, go through, so-and-so, you're missing 20 assignments. Help them get it together so they can get it in. If they need any kind of counseling, maybe that's another part, piece that we need to add. Why is this person not performing? What's happening at home? Do they need some counseling? Offer that. I had a cousin who went through that last year and we got her counseling. We figured out what the problem was and got her back on track. Cause she just flat out didn't do the work, but she needed some help. You had to get her motivated and her parents worked with her. So I, I don't think they should be playing or practicing if you don't get your work in. That's important. Everybody says they're here for an education. And I don't see KU or any other place or the community college letting you go out there and you're failing. And we may be setting them up for failure.
Ms. Page, I don't disagree with you. I think the difference is in those particular cases, they do have the study hall and it's when it's like at a finite point, either the end of quarter or the semester when they're pulled out. But those students are not, if there is an F, so let's say if the grade check is today and somebody has an F because the, they didn't turn the assignment in or the teacher didn't get graded, they're out of practice until that, that gets inputted. So they may miss practice for a week, not due to their, anything that they did other than they were absent, turned to work in late. And the teacher, because of their workload, may not necessarily get to it. So they're sitting out of practice that whole time. And once they turn it in, they're back in practice. So.
Well, I don't have a problem with that, but are you saying every time they don't get it in, is the teacher's fault? The teacher didn't put the points in?
No.
I just want clarity, because.
I'm not saying, I'm saying that can be the case if you are doing this week by week versus at finite points of time of pulling them until they have it. That, that's what I'm saying. I'm not saying it's the teacher's fault. I'm like, clearly if somebody has 20 assignments, that's very different than somebody who's been out for quarantine or whatever and they turn to work one assignment that can drop them down to an F because of the weight of the assignment is where I think you run into an issue of creating a disadvantage for our students when you look at them in comparison to their peers in other districts. Because it's not a, you, a week-to-week thing. And I'm not saying it's the teacher's fault. I'm saying there are cases that occur like that and could occur like that. And that's with the way the policy is written, you do lump all of them together, whether they have 20 or it's one, and it just hasn't been graded.
But then that's another issue that we need to work on there. Because if we're expecting the kids to do their part, I know when I talk, I turn mine in every week. I graded everything because I didn't want them to say, I kept them out. This is what you need to do. I need this in. I'm turning it in. I'm grading it. Are we checking to see if people are doing that? Cause everybody has a role. They have a part to play. The teachers, the parents, the kids, but they got to get the work in. And I'm just afraid we may be sending the wrong message.
Thank you. Uh, Dr. Nguyen, did you have a comment or question?
Yes, thank you. Um, I do not support suspending the requirement for the eligibility policy because it sends the message that grades are not important and there's no consequence for making an F or D. Below a D average, that's, that's serious. Now, if we don't have the support systems in place, I think that is top priority. If, if we're using COVID as a reason, then we need to get the quarantine aspect together ASAP. Because you could quarantine, well, we have quarantined a whole football team. So what have we done? You know, quarantine is not an excuse for no performance, lack of performance and responsibility. When you said maybe the teacher didn't get the assignment graded, we passed a grading policy last year. So there is a grading policy. What I hear from Ms. Romstadt, that the, the SSP is, I don't hear it solid. I don't hear it a well, it, 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 it's clear here of weekly grade checks and, and time after school. The, the, the squishy part for me is that you, it's just like, they can, let's say, allows a student to get help from teachers in the building. Well, what if the teacher's not in the building? You know, and, and is that, I, is that teacher going to be there 30 minutes? Is that teacher going to, you know, going to be there? And if that she has more than one student, how are you handling that? I think the SSP is, is very important. It needs to be tightened up. It needs to be clear. It needs to be, in my opinion, consistent from building to building. It, for you, and, and actually the way you explained it, I don't get the impression that it actually is working. And, and you know, there's, there's no offense, but I mean, it's there. But, you know, the way you're explaining it is like, well, it may be here and it may be there. And if principals, you know, I can't understand principals are in support of allowing students who are failing to perform. The way you explain the SSP is that until they get that work done, if it is just turning an assignment, you turn the assignment in, they understand what they have to do, they go back to practice. But just suspending the requirement is dummying down, rewarding poor behavior and especially rewarding somebody who has an F is, in my opinion, ridiculous. When the comment I think is that Kansas City, Kansas is very strict. We need to be very strict because our, our, our grades are so low, our assessment is so low and we are fourth in the county. So, you know. And lastly, it may be a generational thing because my generation expected performance, expected you to make the grade before you were able to go to dance or student council. Apparently, some of the people who support this do not have those expectations. And part of performance, we all know, is expectations. And we need to maintain high expectations. So I do not support suspending the requirement. Thank you.
Dr. Nguyen, Dr. Jaeger, you had a question?
I think it's important to realize this, 2020.
I think it's important to realize this, 2021 and we're in a pandemic. What we are, what many are failing to realize in 2021 is that both teachers and students are being put on quarantine. Do, while a teacher's on quarantine and possibly sick, we do not expect them to go in and grade every student's work. So therefore, if a student is sick and unable to complete something, and then they start feeling better, can come back. We don't want to hinder that. And it may be a generational thing to where we say it's okay to keep working toward being better. It's okay to be rewarded and actually feel self gratification while you're working toward the goal. So that means, hey, I'm going to keep motivating you. You can practice and we're going to be here to support you because we have confidence that your grades will improve, which in turn allows for students to get a higher grade. It's no longer, it's different standards now. It quite is. Um, we look for self gratification. We look for how students can perform. We look for how we can support students a little more. We encourage feedback from students. We should be able to see how students truly feel about the policy. They know that it's important to get out there to work their best and to go to college. But the reality is on quarantine, while they're quarantined, they may not get assignments and they may not be able to turn them in. That's a reality. So therefore, they've missed 15 days or 10 days worth of school that they have not been able to get in and do. Do we penalize them for it? No. I do not feel like we should penalize our students because they have to be on quarantine. And as we said, are other students doing it? Are other schools better about the process? Maybe, maybe not. The reality is the community talks time after time. Sports is a way for our students to get out of their situations and to be given an opportunity to go to college. They know this. They know the importance of this. If they have a high stat grade, 100 points versus whatever that brings them down to an F and they didn't get a chance to turn it in on quarantine or whatever, I don't, I feel like they should be penalized. I'm in support of this. I believe that, um, the research has been done. There's ways that it can continue to be improved. But as it stands right now, and you're asking for a decision to be made, I think it's important for us to make a decision and support of this so that we can help ensure that our students are getting that opportunity to play sports and continue to work on their GPA.
Thank you, Dr. Jaeger. Um, for the purposes of the time, I know we have a few other things to get to today. Um, I know, and thank you, Ms. Romstadt, Dr. Stubblefield for the information. Um, the, our staff is recommending, um, for us to approve the, amending the eligibility process or policy. Board, is there?
Is there a way that, since this is the first time it's come to us, can, can we have till next board meeting to vote on it? So we can ask questions and stuff?
Just for clarity, today was for information only so that you can vote.
Cause, cause I do have several more questions and we are on a timeframe today. So if I could send those questions to you over the next day and then have a better idea.
Great. Thank you. So Board, if you, um, as you have additional questions, um, great questions today, please send those to Dr. Stubblefield and Ms. Romstadt. Um, and this will come back in front of us at our next board meeting. Um, so again, please send those questions. Um, Ms. Romstadt, I think you, you heard some of the questions that were brought up today. Um, and thank you for providing information, um, to address some of those concerns and questions as well. Um, and we'll look forward to bring, to hearing more at our next board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So we'll move on with our agenda. The next agenda item is an update from the KCK Public Library. And just to, to give a little context on this. Doc, um, Dr. Stubblefield and, and Ms. Levers and, and I met recently, just to bring Dr. Stubblefield up on the conversations that, that have been had and, and just to get an update, if you all recall, it's been a little while since we've had an update regarding the main downtown Kansas City, Kansas Public Library. Um, at one of our previous meetings, we had an assessment that was done by, um, an architecture firm. Um, and then a subsequent conversation of potential rooms or new downtown library, what that might look like. Um, subsequently, Ms. Levers and staff have been having and, and looking into what options may exist um, for a downtown library, um, and what that could look like. So we just thought it's been a while since we've had information. So I asked Ms. Levers, I spoke to Ms. Levers to come back up for today um, to give an update on those conversations. Sorry, is that me?
I think if you're not talking, if you're mute, it may help, it may help with the feedback. I don't know.
Yeah, if everyone could mute, if you're not speaking, that would help. Thank you. Um, so today's just informational, um, from Ms. Levers, obviously an opportunity to ask questions. Um, but please write your questions down. We won't have a ton of time, um, for questions today, but, um, just want to make sure you guys all get the information. So Ms. Levers, Dr. Stubblefield, anything else to add before we pass it on to Ms. Levers? Okay. Carol, thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Appreciate it. Good evening, Board and Staff. Um, I'm going to open up the, and share my screen. Can you see that?
Yes.
I'll show why it's not. Okay. Okay, thank you. Um, the purpose, I guess, for today's meeting is just, uh, like the Board of Education to decide building on the building concepts, one, two, or three for the main, uh, library project. Or, and, and to, uh, greenlight the committee to move forward with the main project, at least next steps we could do. Uh, in summary, uh, we brought in Garcia last year. Um, it was October 20th, uh, and presented the board with the, uh, completed, uh, second feasibility study that we, uh, requested. Um, and, uh, the report provided clarification and explanation, all three buildings. Concept, uh, he gave us three concepts, uh, the new construction to be the best overall. That was the concept number three uh, for the future of the main library. Uh, so the following slide will refresh, uh, you on those three concepts. Uh, concept number one was going to be the renovation. Uh, that's the existing, uh, uh, building. Um, and the low cost will be about 20 million and the high will be 23 million. That one, um, has, uh, the pros will bring the building up to date and make it more efficient. Uh, not much, but a little bit, uh, and accessible. The cons, uh, the library operation would have to seize. Obviously, we'll have to either rent a space so that we could operate as a library somewhere else, uh, and, and move. Um, the administration office will need to be in a separate building as well, as, as, as well as our collections. Um, so, or we won't be able to, uh, uh, offer any services from the downtown library because, uh, they need at least about two years to do building, whomever's going to do it. Uh, functions are undersized, undersized and without capacity for future growth if we just renovate and does not solve the limited parking issue. Number two, uh, concept number two, uh, the low will cost 41 million or just over 41 million, and the high will be 46. Our, uh, pros for that, the patron engagement with the library building is changed by bringing the facade closer to the sidewalk. Uh, it provides a, a modern building, uh, and it can provide housing for, uh, the mobile libraries. The cons will be the library operation will also have to seize because we'll have to move, uh, during construction. And, and that's another two years, exactly like, uh, concept one. Um, uh, but then there will be no outdoor space, uh, controlled by the library and also the parking is further limited. Uh, concept three was the one, uh, that, um, the architects, uh, thought would be best to serve us. Uh, will be 51 million loads, uh, which is what we most probably are targeting for. Um, the, uh, pros, the entire collection and supporting function, uh, on one floor. If we go to another, uh, build on another building, uh, and we'll have a better patron experience. Um, we'll also have several, uh, multi-functional events and programming spaces which we don't have. And that's what the community is asking for. Um, we'll have a cohesive patron arrival experience no matter where they park. Um, and of course, there will be flexibilities with arrangements of, of spaces due to removal of, uh, previous structural limitations. Um, our collection space navigation for patrons and staff will be good. Opportunity to address new designs, uh, practices brought about by the pandemic, allowing safer environment. If a neighboring site is selected, the library op, uh, operation will continue during construction until, uh, that is completed. And then we can completely move over and our, uh, services will not be interrupted. The cons, if on the same site, library operations will have to seize, um, or, or, you know, and then move after construction. Um, Mr. Lopez asked Dennis and I to meet with a group called Lane Four, just to see what they have to offer. Uh, because they would like to see whether, um, a couple of, uh, businesses can get together and build, uh, something or a building, uh, that will, uh, cut the cost, uh, yeah. But that means we won't own the building. It will, they will, uh, own the building. And the consensus was that the library wants to be independent. They came up with a concept of, um, and, and we only found out lately that they actually worked on a 90,000 square foot and we will need 120,000 square foot. And that's why I've asked them to do a, a 90,000, 100,000, and 120,000. Their concept is they can build without putting any money down. Uh, they can build a library. Say for instance, from, uh, 2023, they can start and it takes two years to do that. And once it's completed in 2025, we can then pay, uh, the amount for the 90,000. And I think it will be 37,000, uh, 37,487,000 in the year 2025 when they complete it. If we don't have the, all the cash at that date, we can pay rent for, uh, 25 to 35 years, uh, and it'll go up each year. 1.5 in 25, 1.6 in 26, and so forth. And at the end of that year, they'll still want that cash payment of the original amount of 37. Um, and, uh, uh, but I think it'll be 39 with whatever they add to it. And if you add that all up, it'll still come to 50 million and it'll just give us the 90,000 square foot. Whereas, um, uh, Garcia's, uh, suggestion was 120,000 square foot for 51 million. So this is just the first option. The second option was for the 100,000. And you can see it goes up to, uh, 41, but with added costs, it came up to 43 million. Same happens if they start in 2023, they'll build it for two years. And then, uh, 2025, if we don't have the 43 million, they will, uh, we can pay rent. Uh, 1.7 million in 25, 26 will be 1.8, uh, uh, and so forth. And by the, the end of the, uh, uh, 2032, we will, uh, then have to pay, uh, the full amount of 43,000. But we would have paid all these, uh, years rent and it'll, the cost, it will come up that we have actually, uh, paid 53,000, uh, 53 million, I apologize, uh, at the end of that term for 100,000 square foot. And the, uh, third one, the option that is what the library would need. Then it'll turn out at the end of, uh, the term will be 51 million. And of course, the same thing happens. Um, we can pay rent, but you can see it just goes up, uh, 2 million uh, in 25, 2.1 in 26, et cetera. And it goes up until, uh, 2032 where they expect to get that 51 million at the end of the day. Um, but we would have paid 67 million, uh, for those years that we've paid rent, just options that they've given us. And, uh, we wanted to share with the board. This is a concept that they shared with us, uh, what it may look like. But this is what they would like to have, uh, UMB Bank also part of that deal. Um, obviously, UMB wants to be on Minnesota. So do we, if we can, but, um, uh, you know, we, we wanted to be, uh, uh, independent and lone standing building just for the library. Um, this is an aerial view of where we at. This is our building. Um, obviously, uh, this, uh, building, the old UMB building is also for sale. But this whole open space is also, uh, uh, for sale if, if we need to, um, acquire any land to expand. Uh, what, what, uh, Lane Four, uh, would like to do is go across the street where, um, the Merck Co-op is and where the um, little drive through UMB Bank is, uh, that whole parking lot across from BPU. Uh, that's where they would like to offer, uh, any, um, if, 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 if it's what the board would like us to do. But these are just concept and, uh, stuff that, um, Mr. Lopez asked us to, uh, to gather. This is a concept that, um, two, two years ago that, uh, Garcia actually, uh, drew and shared with us will be on the old, um, on, on Sixth Street, corner of Sixth and Minnesota. Uh, just something, uh, that you could, uh, have an idea of. Um, right now, we have a carryover of 14 million and a capital fund of, uh, seven, over 7 million. So, uh, the total we have is about 21 million. And, uh, we'd like to, uh, find out what the board would like us to do. And, um, I know that, um, Mr. Covington, uh, had some ideas and maybe, um, Tracy could share that if she's available. And then if there's any questions uh, for next steps or what it is that the board, uh, would like me further to explore and find out. The community is questioning me and, you know, to find out what's next. Uh, when can they do fundraising, et cetera? And, um, I, I, I told them that we have to wait for, uh, board's leadership.
Yeah, Carol, if I may add, um, that there would be different funding options between, um, fundraising. We could possibly add it to a bond in the future. There might be other options there. Um, and the, the, the numbers you showed where we possibly be renting and then paying at the end would definitely be negotiable. Um, we would want to have lots of conversations about that because I don't think it makes much sense to rent and then pay the full cost. But we could maybe put down some money in advance, lower our rent costs. So there'd be lots of options there. And that would be talked about down the road. But I just wanted to share those thoughts.
Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you, Tracy. Thank you, Carol, for the information. Um, so Board, again, you know, I know this came before you once before as a, as an informational. It's here for, again, just as an informational topic again, um, today, um, just so that we are all kept up to, to speed on what these conversations have been. At one of our previous meetings, the Board, um, wanted to be kept, um, in the loop as a full Board. So that's the purpose of today's presentation. Um, not necessarily to, to say, yes, we're going to do this, or yes, we like, um, you know, what X proposal was. Um, it's really just for informational. So we know what conversations have been had. Um, Ms. Levers and, and Tracy and, 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 and Dennis have been, um, doing a good job of just investigating what options may exist. So, um, for the purposes of the time, I, I, I do, I, if there are some very specific questions that you all want to share, uh, this afternoon, otherwise I'd, I'd encourage you to again, write those down, send those in to Ms. Levers, Mr. Covington, Dr. Stubblefield, um, so that we can do some further investigating. Um, and we can bring additional information to you all. Um, I will caution anybody that, that's watching. I mean, all, that, those, those pictures that you did see, that, that's not, we're not saying that that's what we're building or that we're even building anything. Um, again, we are just exploring options that are out there. Um, so I don't want anyone to get the wrong idea to, to think that we've already decided that we're going to do, do anything. So just wanted to clarify. So just wanted to clarify in case there was someone um who maybe missed, didn't, didn't see that, so. Specific questions or anything for Ms. Levers or Ms. Kaiser?
Uh, I have one, Randy. Um, you're showing that we have seven, seven million in the capital fund right now, and you're saying there's fourteen million carryover. So is that fourteen million going to be put aside for the li- downtown library?
Yes.
So we've got twenty-one thousand dollar or twenty-one million.
Yes.
Twenty-one million dollars already
Yes.
towards the possible cost of new construction of fifty-one to sixty-five million.
Correct.
So that, we have a, a, a third, a half, almost a half of what you need. And how much um do you anticipate going into the capital fund with the mill levy that you have for this next year? How much per year do you think is going in?
It's, it's about one point two, um, one point two each year, depending on what the budget is.
Okay, and um you've said there are people in the community that are willing to lead a fundraising campaign similar to what we did for the Argentine branch library?
Yes, they, they, they are, and uh mostly is uh uh businesses as well that they want to tap into. Um, so.
And um Tracy, you said there's a possibility that if the community wanted to go for a bond issue to help cover the rest of the cost? That is something that we could explore to see how the community would support that.
That's correct. Yes, we could include it in a future bond uh proposal if elected by voters. The um only thing is that the district would have to own the building, which we would anyway. So um it wouldn't change the mill levy or anything affecting operations. It would just have to be approved by voters as part of a bond process down the, down the road.
Okay, and I know that we have a bond and interest account that the school district pays back. If this is done under the library umbrella, will we pay it back out of the capital mill levy every year?
Yes.
No, actually, actually, Carol, um it would be paid from the bond and interest fund, it would be part of a next bond project. So I don't know if that's something that we would want to consider or not, but it would be an option that we would have um depending on what the next bond issue looks like.
So we can't do a bond issue just for the library?
Correct, we cannot.
Okay, that's what I wanted to to clarify.
But it would have to be approved by voters.
Right, right, okay.
There are additional questions?
Mr. Lopez?
Yes, Dr. Wayne.
Um, Ryan, Ryan.
Yes.
We heard, or someone said at a previous meeting, if the something to the effect that if we did not own the present building, what was the consequence? What was the status of that? You're, are you aware of that?
I'm not. I can, I can touch base with uh Mr. Gohin and.
Yeah, because there is some conversation that that whatever the original documents of that building becoming um part of the school district, it has stipulations.
Okay, so that would probably be on a title report.
Um, correct.
So let me, let me touch base with uh Mr. Gohin and uh we can get you an answer to that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lopez.
Thank you, Dr. Wayne. Any other thoughts or questions for Ms. Levers or Ms. Kaiser? Ms. Page, you're on mute if you're speaking.
I'm gonna.
There you go.
I remember when they first brought this to us, no one talked about costs. They just ask people what they wanted. And I, I think we got to make sure we're real clear, because we're in a pandemic, the economy is not what it should be. And then you're asking people to, I, I'm a property owner, I don't want to pay any more taxes. And I'm not saying we don't need a library, and I have problems paying somebody rent. Now, we own it, we don't pay rent, and then we're going to turn around and pay them? And then if U M B wants to be a part, what aren't they paying? Are they going to pay into it? All these other people going to pay? Because look at Cerner, we got two empty buildings out there. We keep giving people stuff, and we don't reap the ben, we don't get the bang for our buck.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Any other questions? Um, saying none, Ms. Levers, Ms. Kaiser, thank you for the information. What I, what I think I'm, I'm hearing is, is we still um would like you to, to find more information, do some digging, right? I, I think costs and and what those numbers are, what that actually might look like, what funding possibilities might exist for us. Um, you know, whichever option we wanted to go with, um if any, uh if anything, right? Not saying we're going to do anything, but also, you know, what happens with the, the current buildings? I, I think there were questions around, um you know, what, what could happen with that. So it sounds like Ryan's going to follow up with Mr. Gohin on that, but um good information. Thank you for bringing this back. I think, uh Board, thank you for taking this information. We'll bring additional information as Carol and Tracy and staff um continue to have these conversations, so.
Uh if I may just say that the, the last time when it came up, uh I think it was ti- uh during um two previous uh superintendent, uh we, if we do, if the, we do sell the, the building, there is a clause that uh the building needs to be used for educational purposes. That, that was the stipulation onto that. That was the only thing that we uh knew at that time.
Thank you, Ms. Levers.
Thank you, Board. Appreciate it.
Mr. Lopez, may I ask one more question? Um, is the thought going forward, would you like us to go ahead and continue negotiating on costs and um opportunities and how that would look?
So what, what I'm hearing from the conversation is um that, you know, we want to have more information about what those costs would look like. Um if, for, for any of those options, again, an option is to leave the status quo as well, right? Um but, but to look at the different options that have been presented today and previously, what are those, those costs? And I know those costs change or a little variable depending on, you know, materials and all that, but um yeah, I thi- I think so. I think the Board, it sounds like, is, is wanting some more information about costs and how we would pay and um what that would look like.
So yeah. I think that would be very good if we can get some more reasonable um information to bring back forward to you guys, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so we will continue on with our agenda. And again, Board, thank you for the, the, the questions. If you have additional thoughts or questions, please send those to Ms. Levers and Ms. Kaiser, Mr. Covington, thank you. Next on the agenda is an update uh on our safety and security. It will be presented by Chief Horn. Before I pass it on to Chief, um Dr. Stubblefield, anything else we, we want to add as Chief comes on?
No, I actually think it's going to be Dr. Campbell primarily sharing some of the information, or I could be wrong, but um is that correct, Dr. Campbell? Are you sharing the?
That is correct.
Okay, so no, I think she has it all, then we'll just take questions.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Welcome.
Thank you. I am looking to share my screen. Looks like I am. It's blocking me. I know that I. Chief Horn, can you pull up the presentation?
Ma'am, I just have a printed version of it. I do not have electronic version of it. I apologize. Is it on, is it on the Board agenda?
It is, however, I was looking to display it. I'm at a school site. For some reason, this is not opening on my laptop.
I apologize. Leslie, do you have access to that where you could share it possibly?
Yes, I do. Hold on just a second. Thank you.
As we were um waiting, um good afternoon, Board President Lopez and Vice President Carr. Um Board members, Dr. Stubblefield are participating in the audience.
Just a reminder, if you're not speaking, please mute.
Hey, I'm here to provide information to the Board regarding the school's safety and security due to the Board and District working to ensure students and staff excel in a safe and secure environment. So we're going to transition to slide two. As we look at the safety of our schools, conversations have continued uh for several years, but specifically on twenty eighteen, the National Association of Our School Resource Officers outlined kind of why it was important um in, in what was needed to ensure on the national level, what was needed to ensure the safety of our students. So therefore, kind of the information that is going to be shared with you all on today is related to the suggestion as it relates to one S R O per every thousand students. Slide three, please. We, as a district, incorporated some other factors. Um but if you look here, looking at the ratio based upon the suggestion, what was outlined recently was looking at the number of officers at our school sites to the number of students. Um the information on the left-hand side outlines that on this pres- the slide. On the right-hand side, we're looking at our average of our student enrollment for this incoming year as we did our daily count. So again, it may waver a few students here and there, but when we look at our student count, this is kind of the uh foundational numbers that we are looking at that have been consistent from day one to day twenty, which is today. Next slide. So based upon that information and that ratio, um we know that conversations were held as concerns at our high school level specifically. Therefore, here on this slide, you will not see middle school um supports because the main focus was looking at our high school supports. The areas, Board members that you see that are highlighted, highlighted in red are where the additional supports were outlined. What was also shared with you were specifically the job descriptions for three. We're looking at job descriptions for our S S A's, job descriptions for our L E Os, and then job descriptions for our C Os. So that information was shared so you could see how they work as succinct and some of the um roles and responsibilities vary for each of those positions. But again, the highlighted areas in red kind of outline what the amended support would look like for our high school sites. We can move to our next slide. As it relates to school safety personnel, again, we're looking at additional supports, um being on-the-job training beginning now to December twenty twenty-one. We want to stop um the gap, have the stopgap proposal, so we're looking at our K C K C C officers, um looking at, and the M O U, looking at the hourly rate and the student environment experience, and then for our K C K P D officers, um this requires the M O U, the hourly rate, again, lack of student environmental experience. And then we have a hiring shortage that is taking place. So these are some of the considerations as we're looking to provide that amended support at our high school sites. I see you ready to click. Thank you. The other component is our C P I training. This is a nonviolent crisis intervention that uses strategies and techniques. This focuses specifically on the bullet-to-points here. We're looking at care, welfare, safety, security. This rolls out to all of our students and staff, evidence-based de-escalation and crisis prevention approaches. Staff being trained on de-escalation and physical holds for emergencies, because that has also ch- transitioned and changed. With um all of our S A, S S A's were trained just recently on nine seventeen. We have upcoming training that will take place for our building administrators in addition to our sped staff. So again, we're looking at that trickle-down um support as we look at those individuals that need to be trained immediately, drilling down to our building um level administrators and staff. The last slide here looks at the restorative schools initiative, which is outlined in Kip Core. This training supports our district schools, teachers, and educational personnel and restorative practices. Our student service department will be partnering with Kip Core to lead professional development. The pilot school for this will be Harmon High School. So again, just kind of looking at some of the things we are wanting to put in place, not only to amend the support at our school sites as it relates to officers, but amending that restorative S E L support um as we look at C P I training and the additional things that I have shared. What questions do you have for myself or Chief Horn?
Thank you, Dr. Campbell, for the information. I did, um, Board, do you have any questions?
I have a couple of questions. Um as it relates to, last time we discussed, or I asked about security guards, not armed guard like police officers. Um I didn't see the recommendation for a security guard as opposed to police officers. Um, is that continuing to be explored or not? Um then the second question I had um is as it relates to, we do want safety and security for our students. Um I didn't see of an additional with you go back to the slide, Wyandotte has over seven hundred more students than the nearest school, and they only have one more support than someone else. So that slide right there, so it still does not seem like there's an equal amount of coverage for Wyandotte having the most me, you know, having the highest student population. It doesn't seem like there was a balance of seeing um student ratio per help needed. Has that been done or? So two questions.
So the first question we did, um so we did both. We looked at adding additional um security, not armed officers. Um but we did look at our peer districts around us, including Kansas City, Missouri, because their demographics mirror, mirrors ours um more so than the other um suburban and rural districts. And what we found was in the high school setting, it is common, actually, all of the schools have two what they call S R Os or armed officers, and that seemed to be the, the standard in this area. So we did factor that in. And then as far as the additional security, um unarmed individuals, we did um reach out to our building and principals and factor in what they felt like based on their current staff and their need um in addition to their student population, what they felt like would be um ideal for them to provide um uh the safety that they are wanting to achieve in their buildings.
So, so this is what it stands, there's not going to be additional extra, although the student ratio was not the same for others?
We, absolutely, if that is the uh will of the Board, we can add additional ones. But the, we were just sharing our base numbers of what we recommend, recommended based off what we um received from principals and what we compared um to other um districts. But that is definitely a possibility if um, if that is the will of the Board, we can add definitely um advertise for more positions um or add more positions um to the schools.
Okay, and then last question, someone um talked about community support. I also didn't see where we were um looking to partner with community organizations to help support our schools as far as maybe security, or I know there's, um I can't think, I think there was Eagle something that was that Coronado way back, I can't remember the updated name for it. But there was a group of gentlemen who helped out there to help, you know, mentor and things of that nature. I didn't see any of that um listed, although it was listed in like the second slide about safety, security, or maybe, I can't remember which slide number, safety, security, environment, because we know that some of these issues may stem from safety and security. So I'm just wanting to see how we can continue to reach out to our community to ask for resources, help, assistance to um, it, maybe that says slide six, maybe, I'm not sure. Right there, um to talk about non-crisis intervention. I didn't see any partnership or discussion about um what community groups have reached out to.
We were gonna, we can follow up with student services. There are community groups that several of our schools already partner with to do that. We didn't highlight that here necessarily, because I think we were focusing on what we're going to add. Highlight that here necessarily because I think we were focusing on what we're gonna add. Um, that is currently not existence, but I, we can follow up with student services and provide that information. Um, in the Friday update or in a later report.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll I'll add um before before we have other questions or comments. I I do just want to caution our board in terms of. Um, I understand like securing, wanting to um make sure all our staff and students are 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 safe. Uh, making specific recommendations on where we hire um additional staff. Uh, I I just want to caution us on on going down that road. If if the board, if the will of the board is to increase. Um, you know, support and funding or the budget for our security to to. Hire additional officers, um, that's one thing, but. Making specific recommendations on where they would be placed, I think is another conversation. I just want to. Um, caution us on going down that road specifically. Additional questions or comments?
It looks like Wanda's trying to unmute.
No, I I wanted to respond to that. I hear what you're saying, but we're held accountable for everything. Like in the community, they're blaming us. You all just let things get out of control. And we're trying to get a grip on this. We want to work with our administration, but at the same time, bottom line. Guess who they're going to blame? Us. And all we want is these kids, the teachers, anybody who walks in that school to be safe. And I think we all want that. I'm not saying people don't want that, but ultimately, anything that goes wrong. We get blamed for everything. So m- my question is, the incidents, have they slowed down? Have we got a grip on that?
And it looked like Mr. Deng has his hand up, so I just want to give him an opportunity really quick and then uh. The the question to miss that Miss Page asked if we have any information or data on that.
Yeah, thanks, Randy. Um, yeah, I did kind of want to reiterate um and and provide. Maybe a legal basis for the position that Randy iterated. I understand that um. You all are community-facing, you're elected officials, you feel responsive. Part of the problem is, is if the board makes a motion. That a specific number of people are hired and to be assigned to a specific school or facility. Then that person, if we if we need to adjust resources and reassign those personnel. Um, that that makes it challenging for us. We would have to come back to the board for approval. Um, and then the second piece of that is we've. Um, you know, Mr. Goheen expressed to me that we've had people say in the past that they were hired on. Not necessarily in this context of security, but in other contexts, that they were hired on to work at a specific facility. And that accordingly, um, those individuals have resisted um attempts to basically put that person where. The current needs of uh the organization um rest. So. That those are just um some of the legal reasons why I I do agree that we need to be very cautious and. Um, how it is that the board makes any motions on this.
I just want to clarify, I did, I just was talking about the student ratio. Because we know that they work for the district, you know, and allocation, but I wasn't sure if you were asking us about. Allocation of more officers, if that would need to be improved by the board, or are we, or are you open? To only sticking with the positions that are proposed on the slide? Is that, if if you could clarify that?
I think he's just saying, so let's say if if we've had five high schools and you wanted to just say we'll have fifteen officers. But you're not saying five will go to Wyandotte and three over to Harmon, and then we would based off of administratively distribute them accordingly. But it's total numbers versus actual locations, like Wyandotte has. Five and Harmon has two, that's where we will run into some issues.
That's, that's correct.
So I'm, so to clarify. How many, the positions you have listed, that's the maximum positions the board has approved? And you would need approval to hire more? Is that what you were saying? I need clarification.
But I I guess, Dr. Yager, you're asking if. Is is staff recommending to hire additional officers than what's. Already amended on this slide that you're, that we're all saying, right? So that's what's, what's going to be in place. But you're asking if we need to add additional um.
So the the total additional support that we are proposing is four officers and five SSAs. If 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 the board believes that we need either more officers or SSA, you would just. Um, say, we want you to hire six additional officers and six additional SSAs. This is the number. It will be the total number, not, that that's what we would know. So we're proposing. Um, four additional officers and five additional SSAs.
And to clarify, the CO means what again? The CO next to Harmon?
It's a, it's a campus officer, it's a a a position to my understanding that. Was previous to the SSAs, but there were two employees who were camp.
Right, okay.
They ever leave, then it will convert to an SSAs. Their job responsibilities are very similar. The um, there is a difference, but there is a um, there's a difference in pay, so. Those two individuals left and they will convert to SSAs.
I have a question about her.
I'm sorry, before you.
I I had some, I had questions that I never got answered on.
That's what I was getting to, Miss Page. Miss Page had asked if if we've seen a decrease in incidences or if it stayed the same. Um, so I don't know if there's anyone that might be able to answer that or.
Yeah, so Dr. um, Irvin just texted me. She said she just had one fight. In one school today versus multiple from different high schools in one day, and that's just for today. Um, and then in the last few days, remember, students were out of school on Friday for FA eight days, so. Um, like last week, I believe, towards the latter part of the week was probably. Um, there were fewer fights or ones that we are aware of than like in the previous weeks. We did um have a meeting with principals, um, Dr. um Campbell and Dr. Irving. Also um with, to talk about the rep program that the board approved um. At a previous board meeting where um students can be referred there for forty-five days. Um, and principals were looking at some of their um students who would benefit for from that. And they're also, um, we also did a review with principals. Um, students who would um possibly make good candidates and eligibility for the alternative program, so. Those meetings, that meeting occurred on Friday and they've been working through that and they do have some students. That have been um referred or in the process of being referred for to those two programs.
And and Mr. Lopez, legally, what can an SSA do and a CO do? Because there there was some misunderstanding.
So there, what what I discovered last week is the uh training that Dr. Campbell referred to did not occur last year. Um, one, because students were not um in person most of the year. But any staff member, and we're uh training, we will train all of our administrators and all of our COs and SSAs, including our. Um, LEOs as well. If you have proper training on how to dis- de-escalate and restrain properly. Anybody who has the training can intervene um. To stop a a physical altercation. The training did not occur last year. Um, and this year, um, there was just a gap in communication, I think, in transitioning with. New administration, um, that typically this training occurs with administrators and those individuals. Like when they come back in July, we um are working with Dr. Laurie because this is training that. Um, special ed teachers who are in that position with students. That they may possibly have to restrain, that they get annually and they do continue to get their training annually. We just have to wrap in administrators. Campus officers, SSAs, and other staff members um accordingly.
And and my last question, for some of the fights that took place the last two to three weeks. What happened to those students? Was there a parent conference? I'm not saying throw people out, but was there a conference or something? You know, if they're assaulting teachers, what happens?
So I, um, they did follow the procedures in the student code of conduct, um, and without getting into.
No, I don't want to know the detail. I'm just saying.
Yeah, so the procedures in the student code of conduct include everything from removing students from the campus to re-entry. Conferences to students being referred to other locations, so it just, it, they did um follow those. Procedures in regards to that.
And I don't mean any harm because the rumor mill said nothing happened, and I just didn't want to believe that nothing happened. And I'm not asking for the detail, but I do know we do have a student code of conduct and we want to adhere to that. To keep everybody safe.
Thank you.
And I did just get an update. All SSAs were trained in CPI last Wednesday. So we were able to train all of them, all of our current SSAs last Wednesday. And we'll continue to train anybody that we hire along with our administrators um in a future administrative meeting.
And then this will go into effect immediately? Do we need to vote on it or you, this is what was decided?
As far as the.
The addition of the officers.
So my, but, Grant, people are nodding. Some of those positions we had already had posted because they were within our current budget. The additional ones that, I mean, if you remember back to a couple of board meetings, we talked about adding the SSAs. The officers would, what will be what's new. Um, the armed officers would be what's new.
And then someone had asked, will some of these people come from Wyandotte County? Because they were trying to get people to apply.
Uh, they definitely, there's no reason, we would not hire Wyandotte County. I mean, I hope that wouldn't be. So all Wyandotte County citizens, we do encourage them to apply. And yes, definitely, they are prime candidates for these positions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Humphries?
Yes, um, it says here that we've got an MOU with the KCKCC officers. Uh, is that so that if Chief Horn needs them, he can, he already has authorization to contract with them? Or is that something we need to approve? In case he needs them till he gets for the, all the staffing higher?
We, if if you'd like me to answer that, we already have that in place for primary two reasons. One, we have concurrent enrolling students over there. So it gives us jurisdictional authority on both grounds, and yes, likewise, both agencies can share in that uh employment if necessary.
Okay, thank you.
And just to clarify, the salaries are compatible. Um, they will be paid at our rate, is that correct?
If we employed someone as a part-time officer or a police officer here, they'd be paid at our salary rate. And the same if we was employed over there as a part-time or a full-time officer, and there would be no full-time, obviously, because we both have full-time jobs. So it'd be part-time status.
Um, I think my biggest concern is that currently there's a a larger turnover in our officers. That's my concern. Um, it's, I would be an advocate of approving more of the SSAs. Um, not necessarily um armed guard with guns per se, so um. Is a motion needed for extra SSAs or is there a motion that's being requested, Randy?
The SSAs was already in our current budget and we posted and hired, I think, three of those. The what we added today was four additional armed officers, correct? I don't have the slide in front of me. So that's the one, we would need um permission to move forward on.
Sorry, for clarity, uh, Dr. Stubblefield, you said we do, we would need action today for for those additional positions?
Yes, because the SSAs was already in the um current budget and we had already advertised and was um hiring those positions.
Thank you.
I would like to make a motion, Randy, that we uh approve the hiring of an additional four armed officers. Recommended by the superintendent.
There's a motion in a second. Um, I see Ms. Clark with her hand up, so allow discussion and questions. Ms. Clark?
Yeah, I just have, I have a couple of questions. One is about, um, I know we've talked about the fights a lot. And and I don't know if other board members agree with this or not. Sure, the the fighting has been out of control, but there's a lot of other issues and so. I don't know how expectations are being set, and I don't know who that, if that's a question for. Dr. Campbell or for Chief Horn, um, like expectations for these individuals. And then what accountability looks like for them as well. We can get people in the building, but if they don't understand expectations and accountability, then it doesn't matter that they're there.
Are you saying for those that we hire?
Yes, ma'am, because we've talked a lot about fights, but there are, we have, we know that we have a lot of other issues.
Yeah, so a couple of things is like, one, where we acknowledged there was a gap in the training of the CPI. Training, which we just did with all of our officers. When we do the restorative practice trainings at the different campuses, all of the officers will be a part of that too. And as far as expectations around um safety and security, there should be, and Chief Harmon can speak to this. An onboarding process that talks about what the expectation in the role in proactive. Um, in being proactive around situations as well as how to de-escalate appropriately with um teenagers. Um, before it gets to some of those um more volatile situations.
So Dr. Dr. Stubblefield, can we dig just a little bit deeper outside of maybe even rowdy and fighting, just other inappropriate behavior that does not? I mean, that does not align with our code of conduct. We talk about, we are a tobacco-free school. We talk about all the things that we promote. Um, like what does that look like for those people that are coming in as well and and expectations? What does that conversation look like? We go to our games and 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 some behavior is very obvious, and so at what point do we start addressing some of these things?
Chief Horn, can you speak to that? Because my expectation would be if we're tobacco-free, people would not be using any tobacco products. On our campuses and those other things. So I, I would assume that they would be intervening. In those situations.
Yes, and I I I would say that, once again, safety is everyone's responsibility. We're giving our building principals and building leaders and everybody at the staff the ability to look at this in a non-criminal method. And we take leadership and the rules from that, and I think it's everybody. So not only officers or SSAs, it's everybody in the district. If we're going to set a tone for compliance standards. Then I think those are conversations that myself, Dr. Stubble, I mean, Dr. Stubblefield, Dr. Campbell, and all the principals and IOs have those conversations. So that we know what those expectations are specifically building-wide and district-wide, and then all staff have to meet those standards.
Well, Ms. Clark, I'll say it, you were real nice. At some of the games, they're smoking weed in the restrooms. Now, let's just cut to the chase. If it's not supposed to be drugs or tobacco, somebody needs to say something. They just lighten up like no, it's no big deal.
Oh, it's all day in the schools as well, so that, yeah, you're right. I was, I was real nice. And and so I do, I mean, I know at this point, a lot of staff are saying it's overwhelming. And so there's a lot of turning their back because it is overwhelming, but if we're turning the page and we're setting expectations and we're bringing in new people. And I just want us not to be tunnel vision and say, you know, I want to make sure staff understands. It's not just fighting. It's we want our schools to be a place of education. We want our schools to be a safe place. I mean, there's a lot of other things that we want. Other than you not putting your hands on each other.
Well, and I think even to add to that, when we have police officers, we can expect that they will arrest students. Right? Because armed officers, that that, so we can expect the ju- you know, the juvenile. Rate to increase, whereas if we had SSAs to help control it, to send them to the appropriate place. Then we could worry less about them being arrested and having something on the record. I, that's my biggest concern. Is that, you know, the over punishment, but. But with that said, I would, I would like to ask Jamie if you would mind having a friendly amendment. To add in at least one more SSA um, to the building.
I want to go with what the superintendent recommends because that's coming from Chief Horn. It's in the future, they need to come back and ask for more than that, after they reassess it. But I want to go with what our experts who have analyzed this have said they need for right now.
Right, my concern is the ratio was not done, and so there's an unfair ratio at schools. And when I asked about ratios to student population, it's still not equal for our schools.
I thought they did a ratio, and they showed what the numbers.
But it's not equal per student population.
Well, I thought they looked at the population. They gave us those numbers. But in your comment, the police don't arrest everybody. They come in contact. You know, we have to be fair. And I, and from what I've seen ours do, they've been more than accommodating, trying to work with and try to help.
Thank, thank you all. So, uh, Dr. Stubblefield, were you going to say anything or? Sounds like you had a comment.
Oh, I was just going to say, the ratio that we use, we did use a baseline and then we factored in what the building principals. Um, and they share with us of what they felt like they needed. So when you look at Harmon and Wyandotte, they are the same. Um, when you look at the total number, I think they're both seven. And that was based off of Wy- Wyandotte sharing what they needed baseline. And then Harmon given the um, challenges, they've had a few more than other buildings. That's where they were at. So we did have a baseline, but that's how they broke even there. Um, there was just some clear, if you needed clarity around that. And I will say, that's what we have proposed, and if that is, if that's the, if the board feels like. Wyandotte needs more based off what you're hearing directly from community members and things. We are completely fine to add another SSA um, to Wyandotte. We were just sharing what we have received based off principal input in us looking at um, peer districts.
Thank you, Dr. Stubblefield. So it sounds like uh, you and staff have been um, looking into this, having conversations with principals. Thank you, Board, for the questions. If there are additional questions or comments, please send those to Dr. Stubblefield and Dr. Campbell. Thank you for the information, Dr. Campbell in chief as well. Ms. Clark, I really appreciate your comments, um, well, everyone's as well, but just the other perspective with that. So with that, I'll go ahead and ask Miss Smith to do a roll call vote. There was a motion in a second already, so uh, Miss Smith, please do a roll call vote.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Danny Humphrey?
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Sorry, we couldn't hear you.
Oh.
Oh, Wanda, you're good.
I said, yeah, I'm, yeah, yes.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Win. Dr. Yager?
Dr. Yager, yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, um, that is all on our um, agenda today. So thank you, Board. Thank you, staff, so much. Um, and Ryan, thank you for joining us. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.
Randy, um, I just, I just wanted to know, at the next meeting, we'll have the plan for the, for the over. Overcrowding of Wyandotte. There, there was going to be information at our board meeting.
So I will say, in which I'll get to the board uh, members this Friday. We did reach out to RSP based off of, we'll have to wait on the September twentieth and for them to collect information. A boundary proposal would, they said they can have it ready by December. Now, there is just intermediate information that you would need. I just probably need to give more specifics on what you need. But to change the boundaries, um, when they looked at it the earliest, that they could have um, the information ready. Once we have our September twentieth count is December seventh.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you all. Enjoy the rest of your evening.